I want to show you.
Zach.
Do, do, do. More meetings. Hmm. Looks like fun. See, this one, yeah. Me and this computer just do not get along. It trusted make up for what I need when I least wanted to. So I want two pages open. So. Well, we were waiting for Mark. Cause I was like, when is Mrs. Harin at five thirty?
Yeah.
And we were waiting for Mark today. What is he doing? This thing is nutty. Might be the user.
It's you.
That's not what I meant. That's not what I meant.
You said user.
I know, I know.
No, no. Trust me, there are times it should say, user error, replace user and try again.
Alright. It's gonna be fast today. It's beautiful.
I saw Dr. Smith. She's right there. In the pretty.
Yes, of course. I meant Dr. Smith. What I, I saw Lynn, uh. Lynn Warren is whose name I was looking for, not Lynn Smith.
Oh yeah, she's here. What'd I do?
Not you. I'm looking for Lynn Warren's name. I saw it on this thing, I thought. Or did I just see Lynn Warren?
Uh, she's, she was sitting right back there.
Yeah, she was sitting there. I, alright, I thought I saw Lynn Warren and I think I was. I'm kind of looking everybody's name tonight. Well, I think I am still sleep deprived from having to stay in the hospital for two nights for my mother. Because, you know, hospitals are not meant to rest. You're trying to heal and they won't let you rest. But, um, so it's just like. My goodness, I went back to work yesterday. And everything, everything was just out of whack. And I don't let work get next to me. I just don't, you know, it's like.
My sister's already asleep.
When they get their stuff together, I know I can do what I can do. I was just about in tears yesterday. I'm like, what's wrong with me? This is not. And I don't know if I'm, I just told my husband, I said, I think I'm just purely sleep deprived. So my frustration level and emotion level is just all, so.
You're not, you're not, you're not where you usually are.
Yeah, so I said, if I can just catch a buzz, I think I will just be able to be other person. It's just that the rock.
There she is, she's got the big seat. There she is. Sitting next to the superintendent.
That's the hot seat.
That's right.
They offered it to me and I was like, mm, no.
Yeah, that's why we're like, we'll put Janice over there.
I was kinda hoping for the end. I don't know how they're keeping it. What was it?
I would like to, uh, call to order this August the eleventh, two thousand fifteen meeting of the Lee County Board of Education. Uh, I think the first order of business is to welcome our new member to the board. Uh, Dr. Davis, we're proud to have you in our assembly and, uh, we look forward to great things during your tenure here. Uh, Zach Potter from Sanford Herald. Glad you're here, Zach. Um, Jim, where did Jim go? I was gonna. Yeah, did, yeah. I was gonna introduce, uh, Dr. Davis' husband, Jim. He has already departed, uh, left the building. Uh, and, uh, we have another guest, Laurie Salafia from the military, uh, and Laurie has a couple of things she'd like to share with us before we begin.
I have been invited to attend the, um, Sand Lee Middle School New Teacher Orientation tomorrow. So I will be attending and I will set up an information booth and, um, explain the role of the school liaison officer in regards to military children to the teachers. I also am gonna, um, go over two free programs, um, and who doesn't like free? Um, for teachers who have children who struggle in certain subject areas. Um, and this is for military children only, but it's any branch of the service. Um, it's called tutor dot com. They have tutors online twenty-four seven in over forty subject matters. Um, so that is available to all military children. The second program, the Air Force just opened, um, this past week and I'm supposed to be disseminating the information. Um, for teachers who teach children with special needs, the Air Force has a contract with direct step, um, direct step, uh, online courses. And so what will happen is they're opening it up to teachers and parents, um, to take courses that are for absolutely free, e-courses. Two to four hours, you get credit and a certificate. Um, the, uh, classes run, um, I've taken about six of them myself right now. Um, they run two to three chapters and they have an assessment and they get a certificate, um, showing how many hours the class is worth. Um, this is only good till December. I believe the contract is up till December. The only thing they ask is I don't give the key codes out, the teachers will have to directly call me at my office for the key codes to the courses. But I will be giving a list of the courses that they can look at tomorrow. So that's what I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you for what you do for our military children.
May I ask a question if you don't mind?
Sure.
What age groups are the tutor dot com for? Is it all?
Caped at twelve.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, please join me now in a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you will now stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no public comments this evening, so I will proceed with the Lee County Mission and Ethic Statements. Our vision for Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by our, by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. And I'd now like to show, uh, share the code of ethics under which we all work. As, as board members, we must avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation, misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And we must make, avoid making confidential information public. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The agenda is approved. And next, uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes for seven fourteen, two thousand fifteen, seven twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen, and eight four, two thousand fifteen?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, July twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, and August fourth, two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Uh, I do have a brief chairman's report. Uh, somewhat housekeeping, uh, since Dr. Janice Davis is now, uh, a member of our board and is, uh, gonna serve out Mrs. Carlisle's term. Uh, I have asked Mrs. Bowen if she would consider serving as chair, chair lady, chairperson, whatever, what's the proper term?
Chairperson.
Chairperson.
Or chair.
Uh, of the policy committee and she has agreed. And, uh, Dr. Davis has agreed to serve on that committee with Mrs. Bowen, uh, to complete, uh, Mrs. Carlisle's, uh, term, which will, uh, end in, uh, November of two thousand sixteen. And with that, we can proceed with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, two items, uh, I've asked, uh, Mr. Gary Jackson, who's our countywide athletic director, to come and just give you a brief overview of our s- change to the, uh, new conference for middle schools. And y'all have been getting, uh, updates on this sort of throughout the year, but I thought it'd be good for Mister Jackson to come and just take you briefly through that. Whatever you want, Mister Jackson.
I will just update you briefly. I don't know if this is on, maybe I need to get closer. That, uh, there are some changes athletically with our middle schools. Uh, they are starting, uh, this year, uh, this month actually. And, um, just to give you a brief history, uh, last year of, and the, uh, several years previous, we have been in a conference with the Harnett County Schools. And Harnett County is adding a school this coming year. They're opening a new school. And they have decided they no longer, uh, need our participation in their conference and asked us to, uh, bow out gracefully. And, uh, so we have done that and we are now, uh, have developed a conference. We've worked all this past year doing it, uh, to develop a conference with the Moore County Schools. And, um, I think what I'll do, if you, uh, don't mind, I will pass this out to you and then tell you just a little bit about it and then I will bow out.
Watch your step. It's dangerous up here. Thank you.
The front page that has some color to it shows you the ten schools that are in the conference. And, um, we will be starting this, this year again. Our, uh, first football game is, uh, in the middle of September. A couple of slight changes that, uh, you might wanna be aware of. One, as far as football goes, we are having a jamboree this year. I don't think we've ever had one. And, uh, that's gonna be on the sixteenth of September at Union Pines High School. And the other changes, uh, there are some season changes. Uh, traditionally, for example, uh, we have played softball in the spring and we are now playing it in the fall. Traditionally, we have played soccer and volleyball in the fall and we are now playing in the spring. Those are the, the major changes. Um, I think that's basically it. Uh, as you can see, what I've attached is the, uh, constitution for the conference. It's got all the schools listed there also on the first page. And then as you're, uh, looking for things to read, I know you like to read a lot. If you, uh, read this and have some questions, I'm more than happy to try to answer them for you.
There, there is a bit of a conversation about, uh, adding tennis to this, uh, list of sports is.
Some of the, I've, I've asked them, the, the Moore County Schools, and you can see there's a lot more Moore County Schools than there are Lee County. Some of them do have tennis and some do not. It is not a part of their, um, regular sporting events. Uh, they don't have a championship in tennis or anything like that at the middle school level. So I think that's something is, if, if you know me, then you know I would be interested in that. Uh, uh, that's been my background in athletics has been tennis. And, uh, so I would be interested in, in doing that. It just is going to be a little bit of a process getting started. And, um, this is what we're gonna start with this year and unless you guys have some concerns about that, then, uh, we hopefully will add some sports, uh, tennis being one of them. And I would hope to add, to add wrestling too. So.
That's what I was getting ready to ask you about. Does any of those schools have wrestling?
A couple of them have wrestling, um, but, uh, not all of them. So, uh, I'm kinda getting my feet wet with that county right now to see what they're doing, what they wanna do, where they wanna go, and see how we all fit in together, uh, with that, um, try to make it better as we, as we participate.
I knew that the, the, um, the new conference is middle school. The shift in sport seasons, is that strictly middle school or is that high school as well?
That is just for this conference.
Just for this conference.
Just this conference.
I understand.
Um, part of the reason for some of those, um, they, uh, some of those don't have facilities that we are fortunate to have and so they can't do multiple things at the same time. Uh, some, uh, issues were transportation issues, things like that. So we have, uh, agreed, all the athletic directors and, and principals in, in Lee County have sort of just said, let's, let's try this the way that is for this year and then we'll, and we've agreed with, as a conference, uh, that we'll, you know, if we need to make adjustments, we'll bring it up as we, as we go along and try to make this the best we can make it.
What will the, uh, jamboree consist of?
There will be the, uh, there, uh, even though there are ten teams here, uh, there's only eight football teams. Uh, some of the schools actually combine. Um, because I know like, um, High Falls, for example, they only have seventy students in their whole sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, uh, there, they might have eight this year that wanna play football and they might have twelve next year that might wanna play football and, so they combine with another school. I'm, I'm saying that to say that the eight teams will meet, uh, on the sixteenth, starting at four thirty. And, uh, we've already got it all set out where, um, uh, each school will play, uh, another school, like a round robin type thing. It'll take, uh, approximately an hour and a half. And, um, they play, um, when I say an hour and a half, the total is an hour and a half. They'll play one school and, uh, they'll play ten plays, ten offensive plays each, which means each school gets ten defensive plays too, since, and they're playing on half the field. So on a football field, there'll be four teams, two on each half. And, uh, then we'll, we'll just rotate and play another team and they'll have ten plays again. And rotate again, play a different team, uh, and then have ten plays again. So that's basically how it, uh, will operate. There, uh, is a charge. Moore County tells us this will be the biggest fundraiser, uh, biggest funding that we'll have in athletics is, is through this. So we'll, we'll see if that actually takes place. Can I answer any other questions?
My, uh, my only question is, why is it not, uh, uh, okay, I got it. Why did we give it Lee Moore Athletic Conference? Why did we choose that name?
Why did we choose the name?
Yes.
Uh, the way that happened, uh, for some reason I was kinda put in charge before we, uh, actually formulated the conference and ratified everything. I was put in charge of putting this constitution together. So as I started putting stuff together in our first, very first meeting, I came, I, I, I asked the, the rest of the group. I said, I have put down Lee Moore Middle School Conference. If you wanna change that, let's discuss it. And, and, uh, I said, the reason that I put Lee Moore, I just did it in alphabetical order. So, so everybody was fine with that and that's how that came about.
That is good. Any further questions from Mister Jackson?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Jackson. Um, just a very brief update on the, um, on the budget. The House actually this afternoon has passed a, um, it, I didn't get really a chance to read it before I came to the meeting, but the House has passed a, um, very, pretty much the same version of the continuing resolution that was passed, uh, previously. Uh, that is supposed to expire on August fourteenth. Uh, their version of the continuing resolution is supposed to expire now on August thirty-first. The Senate and the governor will have to concur with that. So, um, obviously we're concerned, uh, with the budget, uh, certainly with, um, House and Senate, uh, being so far apart. Um, and, uh, obviously they have not been able to, uh, find common ground, uh, over the last month when they set the, uh, expiration date for the, the current continuing resolution on August fourteenth. Um, also there's been a lot of, uh, discussion, uh, publicly, uh, about the difference between the two budgets regarding teacher assistance and, and where that falls. Um, as you know, the Senate budget, um, over the course of two years would eliminate thirteen thousand or fifteen thousand teacher assistance jobs. Which would re- be, be really difficult. Um, the House at this point as it exists, funds it at the current level. And just a reminder, as you remember, the, uh, continuing resolution, um, funded teacher assistance but did not fund the number of teacher assistants that were from non-recurring money in last year's budget. Uh, if you remember correctly, there was some funding that was provided by the lottery that was to support teacher assistance, but, um, that was placed into the budget as non-recurring. So there are a lot of questions that still have to be answered. And, uh, certainly we're opening up school, um, coming up. Um, certainly excited about up, opening up the traditional calendar next Monday. Um, but the, um, some of the lack of clarity, um, gives us certainly some issues, um, with that. So we are continuing to watch the budget issue closely and, uh, will keep you, um, keep you updated. That concludes my report. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to, uh, continue with, uh, committee reports, please. Uh, curriculum instruction, Mrs. Brogan.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh, curriculum instruction has not met because we're on summer break, but we're getting ready to get going again. Our first, um, high school curriculum instruction meeting will be September second. And that will be at Lee County High School. And then on September ninth will be the middle school curriculum instruction meeting and that will be at Sand Lee Middle School. And then our elementary school curriculum instruction will be on September sixteenth at Edwards Elementary School and they're all at three thirty. So we're getting ready to get rolling again. That's the end of my report.
Facilities and technology, Mister Sharp.
Mister Chairman, uh, the facilities and technology committee did not meet in July and our next meeting will be August the twentieth at five o'clock.
Finance, Mister Akonosho.
Mister Chairman, finance committee did not meet in, uh, in July also.
Uh, policy, Mrs. Bowen.
Policy committee did not meet either since our last meeting. However, our next meeting is one week from today, five o'clock, central office.
Let's continue with action items. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the consent agenda as presented.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Uh, we have one item under new business called the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan. Uh, and I s- Dr. Chappell, uh, is here to, uh, answer our questions.
Good evening and, um, welcome, Dr. Davis.
Thank you.
Very glad to have you here. Um, you have in front of you, it's the Title One and Title Two Comprehensive Plan. And, um, one of the things that I wanna talk to you about that we used the money for last year was to hire some literacy specialists who would work with the, the students in the schools a- in, in a ninety-minute pullout type of session. And, um, I want to tell you that when, um, when you, uh, do get the, um, official, um, scores for this year, you're gonna see what an impact they have had on the three schools that had two for reading. And that was Greenwood and Ingram and Edwards. I was extremely pleased with how well those two literacy specialists worked within the schools and the results we saw. Then we had, uh, three schools that had one and I do believe there was impact there too. But with one, it was, it didn't show quite as much as it did with the two. But, um, when you see things later on, I just, you know, that might be one of the things you wanna look at because that was something new that we tried last year. We are planning to do that again this year with the Title One monies and, um, and some carryover money. Another year or two down the road, we might not have as much carryover, so, you know, I'm hoping we'll be able to show results and impact and see, and then we can make those decisions. We want to keep that on down the road. Uh, but other than that, the Title One and Title Two plan is very similar to what we did last year in the use of the money. A lot of it's going to, um, have additional teachers to reduce class size, particularly from Title Two. And then we also have the, um, the literacy specialists. We have one assistant hired for each of the elementary schools, um, except for Tramway. The other six do have one assistant coming out of Title One money. And then of course, um, supplies and materials and professional development also comes out of those monies. Are there any, uh, questions? Or one for next year?
You said professional development and supplies as well?
Yes, supplies and materials. We buy a lot of books. We also buy, um, the consumable math book that, um, has been very helpful. It's Common Core, written for North Carolin- We also buy, um, the consumable math book that, um, has been very helpful. It's Common Core, written for North Carolina. Um, since our math books are, are quite outdated now. And so we've been buying these consumable books and it's that, it's, there's a pretty big chunk of money, but we feel like that's been well worth it. Uh, but that's one of the big things we buy from, uh, Title One.
And these positions are, um, gonna carry over from the positions last year in addition to the intervention specialists that. Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
Any further questions? In that case, is there a motion to, uh, approve the Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan concerning Title Two A for two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that the Lee County Board of Education approve the CCIP Title One A and Title Two A applications for two thousand fifteen through two thousand sixteen.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion to approve the, uh, CCIP, uh, program is, uh, passed. Thank you, Dr. Chapel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, I'll ask, uh, Mister Akonosho to make a motion for closed session.
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move that Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential, or not a public record under NCGA Section one four-three, three-one-eight, dot one-one, bracket A and one.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we proceed with closed session. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We will proceed with, uh, closed session, please.
I don't.
Did it sound right?
I am.
Okay. Uh, we're ready to reconvene in open session. Uh, and is there a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented?
Mister Chairman, I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the Hum- Human Resources Report for twenty fifteen.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is, is there any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The Human Resources Report is approved as presented and is there now a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
It, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.